Welcome to a panel discussion about school committees in Massachusetts. This panel is sponsored by the Plymouth Area League of Women Voters, and we're partnering with the Plymouth Access Cable TV to bring this panel to you as an on-demand reporting. School committees in Massachusetts are responsible for overseeing the public schools in the district. The Plymouth School Committee conducts meetings in public twice per month. Plymouth School Committee is comprised of seven members elected for three-year overlapping terms at town elections held each May. This panel discussion will focus on the questions that people, members of the community, and voters may have about school committees, such as what exactly do school committees do? How do they influence what happens day-to-day in schools? As a voter, should I access the candidates for the school committee? What kinds of experiences and skills are useful for a school committee candidate to have? Should I learn about and vote for school committee candidates if I don't have children in the school system? How can community members influence what the school committee does? And should I run, consider running for school committee? We'll address these questions today with a terrific panel of people who can offer different perspectives on school committee. My name's Emily Tompkins. I'm a member of the Plymouth Area League of Women Voters, and I'll be moderating this evening's panel discussion. Let me introduce Dr. Chris Campbell, Superintendent of the Schools. Chris is a dedicated, experienced leader. He has left his mark on Plymouth Public Schools over his course of 16 years. For the past four years, he has served as a superintendent, not only supporting the district through COVID, but also through steering the district towards excellence and innovation. Prior to his current role, Chris held the position of Assistant Superintendent for Administration and Instruction, where his visionary leadership contributed to the district's growth and success. His educational journey has roots in the Denham Public Schools, where he spent 13 years in various roles, including Special Educator, Special Education Director, Principal, and Assistant Superintendent. Chris holds bachelor's and master's degree from Bridgewater State University, an advanced graduate from University of Massachusetts, and a doctoral degree from Northeastern University. As a dedicated Plymouth resident for nearly 24 years, Chris alongside his wife proudly raised their three children, all of whom benefited from the outstanding education in the Plymouth Public Schools. Next, I have Ms. Michelle Badger, School Committee Chair. Michelle grew up in Plymouth and attended Sweetbrier College in Virginia, majoring in History and International Affairs while also playing field hockey all four years. After college, she worked at Sweetbrier for their annual fund before returning to Massachusetts to attend graduate school. She received her dual master's degree in Public Administration and Political Science from Suffolk University. When Michelle moved back to Plymouth, she joined the Plymouth in No Place for Hate and then ran for the Plymouth School Committee in 2011. She also serves on the Board of Pilgrim Area Collaborative and other organizations. She's an active volunteer with her alma mater, Sweetbrier College, currently co-chair for the Alumni Alliance Council, class co-president and fund agent, as well as president of the Boston Area Alumni Club, and an admission ambassador. In 2021, she was named one of the 40 Under 40 for Cape and Plymouth Business Media. She also has her certification as a Certified Fundraising Executive. She worked at Massachusetts Maritime Academy for 10 years and currently works at Massasoit Community College as Vice President of Institutional Advancement. In her free time, she loves to read, play field hockey with her team, travel, go on walks with her Boston terrier named Ellie, and hang out with friends in failing. Mr. Luis Pizano, School Committee Vice Chair, is here on the end. Luis has been an active member of the community since moving to Plymouth in 2010. He and his wife Amy are proud to have raised and educated their two children in Plymouth, both of whom now attend Plymouth North High School. In addition to serving on the Plymouth School Committee the past three years, Luis is an active member of the Town Building Committee and Capital Improvements Committee. Luis studied engineering at the Massachusetts Institute of Technology and currently works as a Program Director at EverSource Energy. So let's get, start talking about what the school committee does. Dr. Campbell, can you provide an overview of the primary responsibilities of the school committee in our districts?
I'd be happy to do that. So thank you for having me, first of all. The school committee has three significant responsibilities. One first is the hiring and the evaluation of the superintendent and making sure that they are adhering to the goals and the responsibilities of that job. Second important responsibility is around school budget and finances, making sure that the budget is not only developed, but it really is reflective of the needs of the community, really looking at the strategic plan, where strategic plans are in place, and making sure that the funding is equitable and managed in an appropriate way. And the third is about policy and really making sure that we're following federal and state regulations and that we have policies that meet the needs and the responsibilities of the community to make sure that we're operating our schools in the most effective way. And another sort of unwritten sort of responsibilities about community engagement, really the importance of that, making sure that all stakeholders are involved in the process and making sure that we're reflective of what the community is looking for in education.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Badger, what would your typical month of school committee activity look like beyond the two business meetings? What do you need to be fully engaged and effective as a school committee member?
Well, thank you again for having us. I'm really excited to be here and that you all are doing a panel like this, so thank you. I don't know if there's a typical month or a typical week or a day that you could say, but you know, usually within a week, there's a couple of whether there's like this. So today, we already had a meeting right before this. Now we have this recording, and then afterwards, we have the Children's Business Fair. So it, there, it's a variety of things. So it can be attending an event that is happening. It could be at a specific school. It could be during the day. It could be in the evening. And again, during the day, it's only what we're able to attend. You know, we all have jobs. We're all active in, you know, other areas of our lives. So it's, it's important to be able to have that balance of, all right, let's see, and make sure we have our committee members represented, represented, represented at each. Wow, that was hard. Can I say that again? It's important that we have representation of our committee at different events in different, in different ways. So we have events that we'll go to. We have subcommittees, and we also have school liaisons. So each committee member has at least one school that they are the liaison to. And that, it varies based on the school, how much and what they have you do. In some cases, you'll go to their school council. Sometimes they'll have you in to read a book to a class or be part of a celebration that they're having. So it's, it's really different across the board there. And then we have our outside-of-the-district kind of responsibilities that we might have, like Luis is on our capital, capital outlay, you know, capital improvement, capital improvement committee for the town. And then there are, like, I'm on the Pilgrim Area Collaborative Board, so that, that is with a bunch of other school committee members as we're a member of the Pilgrim Area Collaborative. So I don't know if there's a typical day or month, but there's also busy times. So obviously, at the end of the year, there's award ceremonies and there's all kinds of things to do. So we're always busy. We've got things to do. And it, it's, it's so much fun and it's, it's rewarding to see how, see what we do in our meetings, actually what's taking place in the schools and, you know, how we're able to, as members and working with the district, being able to have an impact on the day-to-day of lives of our students.
Mr. Pizano, what about subcommittee participation in public events?
Sure, yeah, as Ms. Badger said, I would say probably, you know, the, the public, you know, school committee meetings and people see us probably 10 or 20% of the time. There's a lot more time spent, I'll say, doing the actual work outside of the meeting. So you have two big buckets that things volunteer. So you have committee assignments, and those can be subcommittees within the school committee. For instance, advocacy, policy, finance, there's, you know, various subcommittees. But then we're also assigned to various town committees. Like, so I serve on the, as Chair of the Town's Capital Provenance Committee. I've also been an active member of the Town's Building Committee. So a lot of those committee assignments are based on either people's interests or backgrounds. I'm an engineer, so building committee is a kind of a natural fit for me. And so, you know, we kind of divvy it up. So it works out that there's seven of us because it'd be way too much work for, you know, a hand, you know, a smaller group to do. So with the seven of us, we're able to divvy up all those various committee assignments. Then you have, you know, a multitude of committee or community events. You know, having such a large district with, you know, all of our schools, eight elementarys and two middle schools, two, the three high schools essentially, and the preschool. There's an event going on at least one of our schools pretty much every day. And so between the seven of us, it's a matter of, you know, how much can you, you know, what, you know, what's your work schedule allow? What's your availability? And so, so we try to make sure we're covering all those events. Sometimes you might get lucky and there's, you know, three or four people at an event. And sometimes there's one or none. So we do our best to try to spread everything out, but there is no shortage of activities that we can be involved with, you know, in the district this big.
Thank you. So our next question is, why should I learn about and vote for school committee if I have no children in the public school systems? Dr. Campbell, can you answer that?
I'd be happy to. So I think one thing that is really important is, is education. A district or community has a strong education system where, where, where people support the schools. It's, it's a matter of economic stability. It really is. You look at communities that are thriving economically, it's an investment in your community. These are the, these are the future workers, future employers of our community. So it's really important regardless of whether or not you have school-aged children or public school children to get involved, because these are the, these students will be working in our communities and giving back to our communities. So it's critically important that you support that. I also think that it's critically important to really have an analytical look at that. And is your community, you know, putting funding towards things that are important to you? You know, are they, are we really monitoring things and just holding us accountable? I think it's really important. So I think it's certainly important regardless of whether or not you have school-aged children to, to take an apple ball.
Okay. What do you have if you'd like to add something?
I definitely would like to add, I don't have children myself. And so I think it's really important that people who don't have children and who have children get involved. It doesn't matter, you know, we are all invested in the future of our own community and of these students. These are the people and who are gonna take care of us, who are gonna be here when we're older, are gonna make sure that we have a town that's attractive for people to come and live in, that, that are gonna be our future residents. And if we don't invest in our future, then what, you know, I mean, it's kind of corny, what is that, the song, invest in our future? But if we don't invest in the children, then what, where are we, you know, what are we as a society? And so it makes, it makes our town better. And I think it's important that regardless of, you know, your, whether your children are grown or you don't have any, that you're, like Dr. Campbell said, Chris said, that we are making sure that you're looking at the school. And, you know, if there's something that you, you find, have a question about or have an interest about, that you're reaching out and you're having a conversation with somebody. And if you're interested in running, by, by all means, do it, you know?
Yeah, two things I would add. One, to Ms. Badger's point, there's a huge aspect here of just making the town attractive. I mean, that, you know, like, a quality school system is one of the biggest factors that most, you know, people look at when looking at what towns do, especially if they have families. So whether or not you have a family or not, we, you want, you should want people with families to move to our town. I mean, it's important to, you know, to our, to our economy and, you know, the livelihood here. The other point, I think there's a big aspect of, like, of paying it forward here. Whether or not you have kids that are currently in school or don't get it all, someone paid for your education wherever you grew up, whether it was Plymouth or somewhere else. And for a lot of, you know, or I think we have the challenges of folks whose kids are already, you know, out of school. But if, if they had kids, their kids did get a good education. So it's paying a reward. It's like, yeah, you may not have kids in the schools anymore, but you did. And so now, you know, you owe it to that, that next generation. You know, Dr. Campbell's kids are no longer in school here, but he still cares about it. My kids are both in high school, so in a couple of years, you know, I won't, you know, have kids that I'm paying to go to, for, you know, whose education I'm paying for here. But I still, to me, owe it to that next generation of people whose kids are, you know, currently starting in school and, you know, making their way through. It's, you know, it's, 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 it's an ever-ending cycle. So, you know, to me, it's, it's a selfish viewpoint. I'd be like, well, I don't have any money in the school that you're actually like here. But it's, you know, it's, you have to repay what, what you got.
Yeah, and, and, you know, it's a very good point that Luis makes. And also, I think as superintendent and as the school department, we want to hold ourselves accountable to those that, that don't have an impact in terms of having students in the schools, or everyone, anyone for that matter, to know that we're, you know, when it comes to financing and budget and we're asking for something, that we're taking a critical look at things and really holding ourselves accountable to all the stakeholders and to our entire community.
Thank you. So a reason for having a school committee is to represent the community in decisions about the schools and to pool a range of skills and experiences to provide useful input into decision-making. Since we'll be electing three new school committee members in this May, upcoming May, what skills and experiences are useful for a school committee member to have? Ms. Dr. Campbell, are there specific educational or professional backgrounds that are particularly valuable for someone interested in joining the school committee?
So I'd say that I, I think that there's always a skill set that's, that's, it's helpful. It's always helpful to have, you know, some background, maybe in policy or organizational management or leadership of some capacity, you know? But at the end of the day, right, it's not whether or not you have like a degree in education or you have a degree in policy or you, you have a certain background, but really that, that you can work well with people, that you value public education and the importance of the work, that you can work with a body of individuals, you know, seven diverse individuals perhaps, administration and the public at large to do the work for the students of the school district. So at the end of the day, it really, I think it comes down to having people that are willing to take into consideration diverse perspectives, can, can work with various stakeholders, and, and are willing to do the heavy lifting and the work that it takes. Because as Michelle and Luis said, it's not just about those bi-monthly meetings. It's, it's everything else that is involved to do that. So it's, 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 it's more about like someone who can commit that kind of time and, and the willingness to, to do all of that.
Yeah, I mean, if I can add, I just think an important piece would be like that you have the passion for it. You know, because if you don't have the passion or the interest in it, it, it's not something that we, it's, it's so much work that it's not going to be rewarding for you. And, and if you have the passion in it, I think you can find that piece of skill that you have that you can bring to the table. So I don't, like, Dr. Campbell said, I don't think it's about like, oh, I work with budgets or, you know, I do X, Y, and Z. It's more about, okay, do, what, what can I find? If I spend time doing what I know and I go through this from my perspective and I listen to people and I have conversations where I'm really, I think listening to all viewpoints is really important because that's something that we get a lot of. We get phone calls and emails and messages. And, you know, from people we don't know and people we do know and, you know, have hours of conversation with, you know, people about sometimes things we can't do anything about. And it's not that we can't do anything, but we can advocate about them. But they're, they don't fall in, as Dr. Campbell, under our three kind of main areas of the purview of a school committee. But we can advocate. We can talk to the people in the district. We can talk to Chris and the rest of his staff and just have, hey, this is the problem that's coming for me. Is there anything we can do here? But I just think passion is really the important part. Passion for the community too, not just about our students and about education, but as Luis said in the beginning, is it's all about what our community is going to look like in, in the future.
Would you like to add anything, Mr. Pizano?
No, I think they've really decided. It's, it's, there's, I think each of us brings something to the table from our professional background and personal backgrounds, but everybody out there has something that could contribute to, you know, the school committee. I mean, if you're a parent, knowing what it's like to have a kid and raise a kid is a huge skill. If you went to school, which all of us did, you know what it's like to have been a student. So all of those perspectives matter. And if, you know, the, what you do for a living, you know, you know, has some, you know, brings a certain skill set that we can apply, great. But, you know, each, you know, I think what makes the school committee strong is having that mix of perspectives and backgrounds.
As a voter, how should I judge or assess potential candidates for school committee?
So I think there, you know, there's certainly the, the commitment to the work, which we've talked about. There's legal obligations, there's ethical obligations, so commitment to the work. So first, if, if you're committed to being a school committee member, are you going to the meetings? Are you, are you taking part in this subcommittee work that you've been assigned to and agreed to? So that commitment is really important. I think in terms of like, just the, the ethical piece is just following, you know, federal and state regulations and, and making sure that as a committee member, you know, we're, we're following the open meeting law and being mindful of that, where the work is done by the committee. It's really important. And I think just holding each other and individuals accountable for, you know, policies and following policies. So I think that those are things that are critically important to the work.
Probably the two things I would add is, one is, does the person really have the commitment and, you know, to, 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 to the job and the time available for it? Like I was saying earlier, the, the couple of hour, a few hours a month that people see us on TV is a tiny part of the job. There are plenty of those meetings where we might have been there for an hour before that in some executive session or some other subcommittee, subcommittee meetings. There's meetings that we'll have, you know, preparing for those meetings, do agenda meetings, things like that. So it is a very big time commitment. I don't, I don't think most people understand that. So if you're not ready to really give it, you're all, it's not a, you know, all compared to like, you know, having a, an eight-to-five job versus a job that is an eight-to-five job. This is not a, you know, a typically eight-to-five job. A lot of, you know, the meetings are all in the evenings. There's lots of, you know, after-school and evening activities. When it comes to graduation season, we're probably doing something almost every day in May and June. So it is a very big time commitment. The other aspect is I think people should really dig into whether a candidate actually understands the role and the job of the school committee members. There's a lot of misconceptions. A lot of people think that school committee members that we run the schools run the district. There's a big difference between overseeing the district and running it. The day-to-day running of the schools is a job of Dr. Campbell and his staff, his administrators, and the professional educators that we employ to do that. Our job is to oversee that, you know, to, you know, set, set policy, set direction, you know, guide Dr. Campbell. But at the end of the day, we're not running the schools, and that's a big misconception. You, you, we've had candidates that'll run that have all these big ideas of how they're going to do things, how they're going to change and run things. And 99% of the time, there are things that the school committee actually doesn't control. Again, the other thing too is you have to be, have that willingness to work with six other people. You know, having, having ideas isn't doing any good unless you can get at least three other people on, on board with that idea. So, you know, it's got to be a very collaborative effort and, you know, really fundamentally understanding what is in the purview of the school committee.
Yeah, I think that's really important, what's in our purview. Because I think, as Luis said, we get a lot of people who are interested and have a passion about something, but they, which is wonderful, and we want that passion, but they need to understand that we have to work within what our, what Massachusetts state law says we do. What is a school committee member? What can they do? We act as a group. We cannot act as individuals. I mean, me as individual person, Luis as an individual person, we are not the school committee. Like, we cannot speak on behalf of the school committee unless the school committee directs us to be able to do that. You know, I think that's really important, understanding that, the parameters of what a school committee member is. And that is the most important piece.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell, question for you. Are there any legal or ethical requirements that potential school committee members need to meet? Or what would be some less-than-positive actions or conduct that a candidate or member might bring?
Well, I think, getting back to the previous question, I think violating open meeting law. So serving as an individual, unlike what Michelle said, you know, making decisions or trying to have meetings on your own and not acting in, in, as a body with the school committee would be something. So violation of open meeting law. And, and, and also ethically, just holding us accountable to our own policies and procedures in place. As both Luis and Michelle said, we're, we're a large organization, 7,300 students. We have 13 campuses, 14 schools and programs. It's a lot for people who have been hired to do this work. So to do that work of, of school committee, really, it's, it's a huge commitment on their part to understand everything and to serve as a body. So that, that, that's a lot of work. So, you know, again, holding us accountable to our policies and procedures, that's my phone buzzing. So I think in terms of like questionable things, it's when, if, if a school committee member was violating open meeting law or if a committee was violating, violating open meeting law or also, you know, violation of, of policies that may exist and not, you know, holding us true to our policies because it really guides our decision-making as a community, as an organization, and that's really important too.
And I think it's important to remember, we actually have a policy that outlines like, if a member is acting outside of turn, how we, how the processes to make that member aware of what they're doing, might not be following our policies or our guidelines. And another thing is also conflict of interest. So like, I'm a state employee, so I have to make sure, ooh, I'm sorry, I'm a state employee. And so I have to make sure that when I am filling out my paperwork, that I fill out that I'm a state employee so that there's, the conflict of interest can be, it's out there. It's in the open. People know that, but I'm not keeping it hidden from anybody.
Ms. Badger, how do we ensure that the school committee is diverse and representative of the community that it serves?
I think that you vote. I mean, that's number one, right? You vote. You're gonna, as we've already talked about, finding the right candidate, the right person that fulfills what you think a school committee member should be, that you want to, where you want to see the district go and you listen to that person and their, their beliefs at a forum like we Women Voters is so great to do every year. Or if you're reading about them on social media. But I think it's hard to say what, what makes it diverse. You vote for it and people run. I think that's important too. Like, you want to vote, you want a diverse group of people, make sure, think about running yourself. Because I think everyone sits at home and thinks, oh, I could do that. Well, do it, you know? I mean, I think it's always good to have people, new blood, people who are interested in running and who are interested in our education system and making sure that they get involved. But that's how you get it to be diverse. I mean, if you're sitting at home and you're interested and you want us to be more diverse, then step up and do it. Step up and run. Try it. Get involved in the local, at one of the school councils, at, you know, a, any of our subcommittees that we have, that we'll, we'll be having a strategic plan and we always reach out to students. So, I mean, to parents and community members asking, so we have a diverse kind of look at what we're doing with the district. And so, I mean, even if you're not a member, you can still have an impact on what's happening in the district by way of subcommittees and school councils and things like that.
Well, this is a big question. What role does the school committee play in budgeting and financial decisions for the schools?
Me?
Sure.
Okay. I mean, we, as Dr. Campbell already said in the beginning, we were talking about like how budgets work. We sit down and, you know, we are the advisors, really. They come to us and they say, this is what we have and this is what we're thinking about doing. And before the budget presentation, we will have conversations leading up to it about what it looks like, how any kind of outside things that might be happening that we're not, you know, when COVID was going on, how does that impact the budget outside of what we're doing within the schools? Talking about all of that, what is happening in the town that will kind of feed into our budget? And what kind of external things are happening that we also might need? That might not be directly in our budget but are in like capital outlay or capital improvement? And so we get like a full look of what the district needs. Our, what, two nights, not two nights ago, two weeks ago, we had our whole look over what capital outlay needed. Or, sorry, capital improvement. I'm gonna change. I'm gonna get it right someday. Capital improvement. What, what we need this year as a district. So that's one part of, you know, of what the school needs. And then there's the other part of the budget that we work within. And then we have a budget meeting in December and go over every piece of the budget. We get a binder full, or not a binder, but you can print it out and there's lots of information. Or you have a big binder, as many of the administrators have. And you go line by line and you can see, I mean, many times I, I go, I go line by line in the budget to see, all right, is this school and this school, what's happening? Are we doing the same thing in one place? Dr. Campbell can attest to that because I've often had questions. It's like, why are we spending, you know, I know it seems simple, but why are we spending $5 over here? But it's $4.50 at this school. Is there a reason behind it? And so you get those pieces and that piece of knowledge. And we have all of the budget, all the school principals come in front of us and they tell us, you know, this is what we have, this is what we want to do, and this is how our budget stands with the population we have. And then we have an opportunity to think about it, go back. And the following meeting at the end of December, we vote on it and we approve it or we don't. And it gives us an opportunity to kind of sink in, have some conversations with follow-up questions. Because sometimes, you know, you sit there and you go home and you're like, oh, I didn't even think about that. Like, here's my question, you know, Chris, can you explain this to us? So, you know, we, we obviously approve the budget, but a big part of the budget creation comes from the staff. Again, we aren't day-to-day running. Again, we aren't day-to-day running. We are helping and we're advising and we're just making sure that things are done following the guidelines.
But critically important to that process is Michelle said, so, you know, we, we, we propose a budget to the, the school committee. And it's very detailed and we do those presentations, cost center by cost center. So principals are coordinators, are directors. Um, and I think at the end of the day, particularly our school committee here in Plymouth, can speak for our school committee. At the end of the day, they're looking at, are we budgeting in an equitable manner? Are we budgeting in relation to the goals that we've set as a s- school committee and as a district in our strategic plan? Or within our school improvement plans that have been come, have come before us from, from our councils? And, and just having that critical look and asking those questions, as Michelle said, to make sure that, um, that we're holding ourselves accountable again and advocating for what we need, whether it's resources through our budget or our capital needs for our facility improvements. So critical, critical role, obviously, like the day-to-day operations of the budget comes from, from myself and my staff. But the oversight of that and, and just make, holding us accountable to, to those obligations is critically important. And time intensive too.
And I think one other thing too, you like to do is always, always asking, what is this, what's missing from this budget? Like if you could have all the money in the world and you could, what is it that you're missing in your school that you would like to have? And it's just information for us so that when we're looking, when we go forward, it's like, okay. Well, how can we might be able to help make that be something and, you know, how is that, what impact does that have on X, Y, or Z? If that's what our, what our, our principals are saying they really need, but they don't have. So.
Would you like to add something?
Yeah, I think w- once that budget is set, you know, there's that, you know, we focus a lot on, you know, the activities in say November, December of getting that budget approved. But then it's, you know, managing that budget for, you know, the rest, you know, for the upcoming, uh, school year. So one, ho- holding the administration accountable to the budget that, that we've set. But then also throughout, throughout the year, we might, you know, you know, the administration might identify a need for a new position or something. All those, you know, requests come before us. We look at it, is this a position that we really need? What's the benefit, you know, to, to the, to the district? Is it actually gonna save us money somewhere else? So really, you know, we, we, we are critically, you know, uh, important in that whole process. And then as Dr. Campbell said, just holding the, you know, the administration accountable to make sure that, that the budget that we are operating under, you know, is, you know, reflective of the community's objectives, goals and, you know, that we're listening to, you know, to the, uh, community members that we're, you know, prioritizing money where, you know, where we think it should be prioritized. And then we're not spending it in places that we think are, you know, less important. At the end of the day, we want to make sure that everybody's getting what they need. And so it's hard to make everyone happy. But we're trying to make sure we're as responsive to the community as possible.
Ms. Badger, uh, how does the school committee actively engage with the community and seek input from parents, students and residents, particularly around the budget?
Okay, so around the budget, I mean, it's just like with any other thing really. I mean, we want to have our community members reaching out to us and, and saying, hey, this is what we think is really important. I, I mean, we were just talking about, um, some resolutions that MASC has coming up and they are going to be, um, kind of going to the wayside. And we had a student who, a, a student group that actually emailed us about the same topic. We were looking at polystyrene, like get, removing polystyrene from the, and so a student emailed us and it was like just perfect timing and really kind of exciting that we were talking about something that some high school students were also passionate about. And so it, it, just like that, although it wasn't budget related, that's what we're always looking for. If they want to email, have a co- a conversation, a phone call, a message, a text, whatever, however it might come across. Excuse me, however it might come across, um, it is really important to us. And we have a budget hearing that we hold so that during our budget process, um, we, it's an opportunity for uh, members of the public to come and just ask questions, to, um, you know, let their concerns be heard about where our budget is heading, what they think about the budget, where they think we're lacking, or where they think we're doing a really great job. And so we, because it's the budget, I mean, we have the hearing piece to it, so it's a little bit more official. But for anything, we're always looking to hear from our constituencies.
Would you like to add anything?
Sure. I think, uh, as Ms. Badger said, um, we have the formal process, but also finding other ways and opportunities for, um, our families and, and community members to hear about the budget and also give some feedback. Our student councils is another example through the, the leadership of the principals to sort of share their thoughts before they build their budget. So that it's reflected, uh, perhaps in a proposal that they're making. We're always looking for ways to, this, this year, we're also, we're starting a sort of informal coffee, for example. Try to get feedback from people or let them know what's going on, but also making people aware of other opportunities, whether it's the formal budget presentation, school committee, the public hearing, um, to, we also do a budget presentation to the, the education subcommittee of the finance committee. So there are multiple opportunities to, uh, to learn about our budget or budget proposals um, and to get questions answered and to get some feedback. So again, there's the formal process, but also I think just encouraging people to reach out, come to us, come to the school committee, get your questions answered.
And I think another piece of that too is if we have a, you know, we vote on our budget in December, but we don't actually get our budget approved until April by town meetings. So I think that's an important, so there, as Dr. Campbell mentioned, there's a lot of stuff that's happening in between, a lot of meetings that are being held. A lot of, um, questions that are being answered at the different, uh, caucuses. And so that's an opportunity to get involved too. And if there's something that for some reason, like years ago, we had an issue or not an issue, a budget, um, question about, um, band uniforms. And that was a huge deal. We wanted to replace band uniforms that I think were put, were started like the year I was born. And so, and this wasn't that long ago. So the budget, the band uniforms had had a good life. And there were some people who were really just like, they're fine, you don't need new uniforms. And, but we had a lot of our, our families who knew our students are wearing those band uniforms. We know they can't last. And they actually came and they helped us advocate for that, um, as part of the process. They went to the caucuses, they went to, um, town meeting and they advocated on behalf. So it's not just about obviously that one way to us. It can be that, that back way or the, um, it can be, uh, you know, an advocate, advocacy way through our town, um, like budget process.
Um, one thing, you know, Dr. Campbell mentioned the school councils. I think that's an area that most people don't, uh, that we don't have probably enough involvement in where you can probably have the most, I think, the most, uh, impact as, you know, as, as a parent or community, uh, member. Cause there you're, you know, acting at your school level where, you know, where your children are in school. And, you know, the, the budgets are, you know, a lot of times, you know, very, uh, bottoms up. So each of the principals manages the budgets for those schools and we roll everything up at the district level. But ha- you know, having input to the individual principals and helping them, you know, set their priorities and understand what is my, you know, student body or, you know, parent body care about in this, you know, budget? There's some things that, you know, you don't have a lot of control over, but there is, you know, discretion there. And I think, you know, ha- starting at that level can have a lot more, uh, impact. Well, before it's ever getting to us, you know, in November, December, January is, you know, for, to vote on budgets, just being part of the actual, um, process. I myself was a school councilman for like eight years before I ever got on the school committee. To me, that's huge, um, you know, experience or talking about how, you know, some of the qualifications. That school council process, you know, is something that, you know, at some schools is very, very active. At some schools, it's not, not, um, not so much. But that's an area where parents could have a lot more, um, you know, impact and have a lot more insight into how an individual school is run. You know, there's a lot of interaction with school committee members, with, uh, school administration. So to me, it's a little microcosm of, you know, almost of how the, the districts run, but on an individual school level.
Yes.
It's really important. I mean, and that's how I met Louise. The first time I met him, at Federal Fairness. But i- it's such an important, you, you learn so much at, at the school council level. And, um, it, it just kind of shows you, it gives you, like you said, like a microcosm of what it means to be a school committee member. So it's.
Yeah, I can't help but reinforce what Louise and Michelle said. It, it, in having, uh, met Mr. Prisano multiple times at the school committee table, well before he became on school committee because he's been such an active member of our community and multiple school councils. But it is, it's, as Louise said, it's a wonderful opportunity to get involved in your local school, to see how things are operating, um, to set some goals, some short-term and long-term goals for that school, which at the end of the day are going to have a financial implication, right? Whether it's staffing, resources, et cetera. So it's a wonderful way and I would encourage anyone who is interested or considering that to just go to a meeting even and to see what it's all about. And to start there because we're always looking for community and family to, to join the councils.
Yeah, cause you don't have to have kids to be on a council. There's community members and I would say most will probably need a community member, uh, person to be part of it. So.
One, one of these, you know, is a school committee member, you know, almost, you know, from pretty much like, uh, October through like, you know, April and June. We usually have at least one, if not two schools that each of the meetings presenting school improvement, uh, plans as it takes, you know, pretty much the whole school year to get through them all. You know, in our position as school committee members, we're looking at, you know, all of the, all of these school improvement plans and trying to, you know, you're comparing them and trying to, you know, make sure that every school is, you know, is on track with their objectives. But i- if you've actually been on the other side of helping put together those school improvement plans, you know, it, it makes the job of being a school committee member a lot easier. So I mean, I highly recommend, you know, if someone's considering it, maybe start there. Cause it's, you know, if, if, i- i- if you like being on this, on this, on a, uh, uh, working at that level and you can, you know, and can start seeing how things, you know, roll up to the school committee, that's, you know, it's, it's a big step. If you don't enjoy that work, you're not gonna enjoy the work of school committee. School, school council's a tiny responsibility, you know, time-wise compared to the school committee. But you've got to be, if you can't commit to that, you're not gonna be able to commit to school committee.
So school committee members, they also participate in strategic planning for the, for the district and they set policy. What strategic planning is happening now in the Plymouth Public Schools?
That's a great question. I'd be happy to kick that one off. So we are in our final year of our current strategic plan and we will be initiating a new strategic planning process for this year. Sort of three phases to the work that we're doing. So right now, we're doing a lot of data collection. So we're looking at, um, both qualitative and quantitative data. We're setting up surveys that we will be administering and distributing to the entire community. Our students, our parents, our faculty, our administration, everyone, trying to get as much feedback as we possibly can to sort of gauge perceptions um, of everyone in Plymouth. The second part of that is having, uh, focus groups. We're gonna have multiple focus groups, which will be taking place in January. So focus groups for our students, focus groups for all of our faculty, focus, focus group for administration, school committee, get involved as well as, um, you know, all of our families in the community at large. So those will be taking place during January. From February to May, we'll be working with a, and with a strategic planning committee, sort of looking at all that data that I mentioned, looking at all that perception data, looking at the feedback from the focus groups and trying to come up with a well-articulated plan for the next three years. We used to do a plan that would last five years. Five years is too long. Things change too much. So you really need to do, it requires more work because it's a shorter, it's a shorter, um, plan. But to do it well, you need to look at that critically at, at the most within a three-year period. So we'll be starting that process, as they said, now, but the committee will start as a working group in February, go through May. And then that plan, which has two school committee members as liaisons, Mr. Prisano being one of them, will be active members of that and then present that plan to the school committee sometime in May for the final approval. As I said, that plan really is a roadmap for our district and it's critically important that we do it well. That we feel that it's reflective of what our community is looking for, where our needs lie and then any discrepancies that need, need to be addressed. So, um, looking forward to that process.
Yeah, no, that, I mean, that, that process is, uh, huge. Like Dr. Campbell said, it really sets a roadmap for how the district, you know, operates. It's not a, you know, a, you know, just a list of, you know, aspirational goals or objectives. It really outlines how we're gonna, uh, you know, uh, operate. You know, it has huge influences on how we, how we budget, cause it's setting priorities, just saying, hey, this is a strategic, you know, objective. It's, it requires funding, it requires resources, you know, positions, et cetera. So it really drives, um, you know, a, a lot of things.
What do you see as the most significant challenges and opportunities for our local schools in the coming years?
Also, I've got two of them. One, I mean, just, uh, you know, I guess one about you could say, uh, you know, uh, finances. You know, there's two huge, you know, if people look at our, our, the, our, our budget, wow, it's, you know, you're over a hundred million dollars. It's a ton of money. Why haven't you posted how much money? But, you know, it, we are a, a big district. We have a lot of employees. Everyone wants a small, say, you know, teacher to student ratio in their classrooms. Good teachers are not, are not cheap and we are in, you know, a very competitive environment. You know, there is no shortage of talents throughout the South Shore where teachers can, you know, you know, can entertain other appointment opportunities. So being competitive in this market is huge and that means being able to, you know, pay teachers competitively to attract teachers into the district and to be able to retain, um, uh, teachers. The other thing is our, you know, our buildings. You know, it's our, our, our newest elementary schools were built in the seventies. You know, those are the new ones. You know, and so we, there's a lot of TLC needed just to maintain some of these buildings. And, you know, in, in a number of cases, we're getting to the point where you're just throwing, you know, throwing money, you know, where you're, where you'd be better off replacing a school. And so we're getting to that point, we're really need to start looking at very significant investments. Some of, some of the schools need significant investments just to, you know, maintain, you know, a, a equitable, you know, quality for the students. But, you know, we, we are gonna be making some very tough choices in the, in the, you know, in the near future um, in order, in order to provide, you know, Plymouth, uh, students with, you know, quality, you know, uh, buildings. That's huge and there's no, you know, there's, there's no way around it. Um, and some people just need to realize that having a quality education system, you know, is expensive. But it's, you, you, it's a matter of priorities.
And I, I would echo both of those and I think making sure that we're focusing on the DEIB, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. I think that is really important and it, it's not as a, as much of a challenge, but I think it's just an important thing that we're focusing on. That it's something that we as a district are, we know is important. We know that as we continue to evolve as a district, I mean, we are changing i- in demographic wise as to what our district looks like. And so we need to be prepared to make sure that everybody feels comfortable in our school buildings. That anybody who comes to Plymouth has the, has the resources that they need and that we can provide that. You know, we, that goes with translation services, with all kinds of things, making sure that regardless of how someone, um, the, someone who, how, however they come across, however they want to be, um, uh, I'm losing words, I'm sorry. However, a student kind of wants to express themselves, you know, with our transgendered students, with all of that. You know, any, any student is comfortable in our building. So I think we've got DEIB, which also goes quickly into school safety because if our students don't feel like they belong, our safe, safety is a question. You know, obviously they have, they might, might not feel safe in our buildings and that's really important. And having those pieces together, we're making sure that our students have, I mean, I went through the schools and, you know, there was always a faculty member or a staff member that I knew that if I had a question or a need, I could go to and, you know, say something. But all of our students need to have someone like that. We just can't have it be, you know, most students do, but not some. So that's why I think making sure that we're focusing on DEIB is really important, which goes into our buildings, having equitable pieces and then our, our budget and all of that. So yes.
Yeah, I would e- echo everything that they've said already and it, it is a challenging time and we understand that. But, um, our budget is big. We're a large, we're one of the largest, um, towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I think we're ranked thirteenth, in fact, of all communities. We're geographically large and it requires, you know, a substantial amount of money on an annual basis to educate students. It's very difficult to attract and retain teachers when you don't have a competitive salary. We have had some reductions in our budget for several years too. We've been very fortunate to have stimulus dollars from the state and, and, and from the federal government. Those monies are gone. So things that we need to advocate for, that we need in order to provide an equitable and fair, um, education for our students. Our facilities, as Mr. Prisano said, are very old. We're very fortunate to have two beautiful high schools. And, uh, and a, and one middle school that's relatively new, um, nineteen ninety-nine. But we have aging facilities and, and it's very expensive to, to maintain. We have one point three million square feet of property, of buildings. That's expensive. That comes at a cost. So it's, it's something that, you know, we just need to be mindful of. Again, this is why we have to hold ourselves accountable to how we maintain our buildings, how we budget. And when we're advocating for something, it's something that we truly need. It's in the best interest of the kids, but it, it, it really comes down to finances, we'll be worried, I think.
Uh, so for the people who are watching at home, should they consider running for school committee and why?
Yes. I mean, if it's something you wanna do, I think we've already covered that. If you've, if you've been through the process and you've joined a school council and you determine that school council isn't for you, then school committee is probably not for you. But, you know, I think it's important that anybody who, who wants to gives it a shot. I mean, it is, it's really. I mean, it is, it's really rewarding and it's something, it, you know, in the years that I've been doing it, I've seen change in our district. I've seen, you know, we've made really wonderful improvements on a district that was already, you know, go, it was already doing really well. And so, uh, we continue to build on that and so being part of the success of the district, if someone wants to be a part of that, then, and they're willing to work with people and, you know, it's not always my way or the highway, or this is what we're going to do, because we're a group of seven. And that you can't just come in and wave a magic wand and something changes, it's a process. It's, it, you've got to put the time and the work in and make sure that it fits with our, what we, what we have under our guidelines too, so.
So, in finish, what would each of you like to say about the role or importance of the school committee in the community and why residents should be paying attention and voting? Mr. Kim?
So, um, the role of school committee is critically important and, and it requires a lot of work. So, um, I think it's critically important to, to, um, to be aware of what our schools are doing, what the school committee does. And would encourage anyone, as Michelle said, to get involved, even if it's at the student, school council level at first, to get involved in your, your local schools through school committee. It really helps to, again, the importance of school committee to, to hold us accountable to the work that the community at large is, is looking for and, and the vision that they have for their, for their children, it's critically important. You know, as we said at the beginning of this discussion, education is the key here and the connectedness to economic development, it's, it's the key to a, a thriving community. So it's really important, I think, to get involved in that. I think if you want to get involved, you have to be willing and, and able to, to do all the work that we talked about this evening, uh, which is a lot. But we encourage anyone who wants to do that in a collaborative way with a, a group, in our case, a body of seven.
Yeah, I mean, folks should, you know, one, we want people to be involved. You know, a lot of times we, we don't hear enough from the community. Plenty of our school committee meetings, there's no one there for a public comment. You know, there's, yeah, a lot of people that have ideas or maybe complaints, but they're not getting anywhere. They're not, they're not, you know, voicing to the school committee, maybe not voicing to administration. So in order for us, you know, to do something about that, we need to, you know, we need to hear from people. Uh, and also just taking advantage of the multitude of ways to get involved, you know, besides the school councils, you know, we had, you know, we went through redistricting a couple of years ago. There was a redistricting, you know, uh, committee made up of uh, parents from throughout the school district. You know, we go through the strategic planning process this year, we will need people from throughout, out the district. I mean, there are very big ways that people can get involved, um, you know, that isn't a, you know, a super long term commitment or isn't, you know, going to be, you know, uh, you know, uh, tons and tons of meetings. It's, you know, these are, you know, you know, committees that might go for several months, maybe you're meeting once or twice a month, but can actually ha- have a big impact on the future of the district. So just getting en- engaged, you know, it doesn't have to be that you're running for, for school committee, just finding other ways of being engaged in the district. And, you know, providing us with that, you know, uh, that, that, that input, you know, as school committee members, we are, you know, the representatives of the community, you know, to the schools. You know, if, if it's hard for us to represent people if we're not hearing from, from, so I said, you know, if, if people have ideas, you know, please, you know, use us as your advocates.
I couldn't, I couldn't agree more and I think one other uh, group to remember that people can get involved in is our um, technical advisory commis- councils, advisory communities that they're part of, which I think are really important, because they sometimes, they have a, you know, this is what's happening in the real world with uh, marketing and this is how we can be able to help and how maybe we adjust the curriculum or this is an actual, like, I, I'm on a, a board that we were, on a couple of boards that have been part, that worked with the marketing students. And so, um, to create a logo, so we did a logo for, I think it was Dream Ride, we did a logo with the schools and we tried to kind of get them to help us with our social media. So there's like so many ways to be involved that maybe isn't, as Louise said, running for school committee, but there's a way to help students with real world projects, there's a way to help students with navigating what their path might be. Or just helping our faculty figure out if what they're, you know, if they were in the workforce ten years ago doing X, Y, and Z, is that what is still needed now as we continue to evolve in, you know, these times post COVID? So many things, everything is moving so much faster. So just getting involved, I think, is really important and paying attention. And, you know, I think that goes back to your question, pay attention, you know, come to public comment. We can't, we don't engage in public comment, that's just part of the way it works, but there might be some school committee member who finds it interesting or if you reach out and, you know, we have a conversation with Dr. Campbell or what have you. But if, as Louise said, if we don't hear from you, we don't know that there's, there's a problem or we don't know that you really enjoy something. Because it doesn't always have to be a problem, you can, you can say something was really good and I love to get those emails, we don't get enough of those. And, you know, I think, um, when at school open, I gave the welcome speech and my whole speech was about we, the school, the school system itself, there are so many wonderful that things that happen day to day, but we don't hear about the little things. Like I said, you have a connection in the school, someone's there, you know, you, you, your coach is in the building and, you know, if you need someone, you know that the coach is going to be there to help you. Or, you know, you've got, there's, it's a family, it's a community and, and that, it's, it's so important that we come together as a district and we're not, but we can if we don't know about it and, but if you have a positive, please let us know too, because those are really good things to know.
Yeah, I think it comes down to feedback, right?
Yes, any kind.
Constructive feedback, any, any kind of feedback and, and administratively also looking for that too. So, reach out, um, make suggestions on how we can sort of create other opportunities to get feedback from the community. You know, we try to do it virtually, we try to do it face to face, we try to do informal settings or formal meetings. So just as much as we possibly can to try to meet sort of the, the, the day to day challenges that families have too. Raising multiple children, work commitments and all that, we want to get feedback. We understand that you can't always come out to a formal meeting or get away for a specific opportunity, but we want to get feedback and, and, you know, we want to make sure that we're hearing from all of our stakeholders.
Yeah, sending us messages and emails and not always, you know, I think this is important in our Facebook world, not just putting them on our community or pages, but coming to us and saying, hey, I hear this is happening or this is happening to my kid. Well, I can help you figure out who you need to contact, instead of putting it out there and it like riles up our whole community about something that may be happening, but it might also not be happening. And it might be something really quick fix could solve, um, or maybe it is something that's larger. But coming directly to the administration or the school committee is your, or to your building, I think leadership is really the important piece too. But going on Facebook does not solve your problems usually. Sorry, that's my plug.
Sometimes it'd be someone just asking questions, you know, things of, hey, why, why is the, why is the school doing that? Or why is the district doing that? Or why did the school committee do this? Just reaching out to one of us and asking a question, because sometimes it might be like a very simple answer or maybe, you know what, I'm not sure, let me, let me talk to Dr. Campbell and see, see, see what the story is there, because I think a lot of people, but with, without having that, you know, definite answer will kind of make up their own truth or, you know, start speculating and, or, or you don't have maybe the whole, the whole story, the whole perspective. It's like, oh, okay, now I understand why we're doing this, but you know, if you only have one piece of it, it may not make, make sense. You know, a lot of things that we're trying to do is, you know, are, are being, we're making decisions based on what's best for the district as a whole. So it may not make sense for, you know, the, the little snippet that you're looking at, but they, you know, once you have all the context, I'm like, oh, okay, that makes sense. And so, just reaching out to, if you have a question, you know, reach out to us, we might know or we can find out.
Oh, I was just going to say, sometimes it, you know, I had a question once not that long ago of, when do we get to see the documents that you're talking about? And I, I was like, what do you mean? It's, they just didn't know where to find the agenda and all the pieces that went with it. And so it was a super quick fit, a quick answer, but the person literally thought we were like talking about things that they couldn't see. But they can see it, I mean, it, it, little things like that are really do solve some problems and some help people kind of engage.
Yeah, for instance, all like all the, the budget needles, you're talking about, all of that stuff is completely public. You can, if you want to look at hundreds of pages of spreadsheets, you can see where every dollar the district spends is going to. So I mean, it's, it is all completely public information and it's posted on our, you know, when we vote on the budget, the budget that we're voting on is in the agenda, it can be, you know, downloaded.
Several, several days in advance too. And I think that, again, it comes down to how can we help be more transparent with that, with that information and help lead people to that? So, using social media to promote, like, this is where you can find this information, you know, go to our website. Did you know that Electronic School Board, which houses all of the school committee matters, has a whole host of, you know, a lot of information, not only the details to the agendas, but what some communities, you know, our members are a part of and all sorts of things. So really trying to be as transparent and informative as possible and kind of break down any barriers or challenges to that communication is really important for me administratively to make sure that we're doing that so that people know where to find that information. If it's not accessible or it's hard to find, that's good feedback too, because we want to make it very transparent and, and accessible for people.
Thank you all so much for your time tonight and you're truly dedicated to our community, really appreciate um, your perspectives today and I hope you all have a great night.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.